Good afternoon colleagues, good afternoon audience. It is my pleasure to introduce our March Caddo Parish Student Leader of the Month, Mr. David Adger. Mr. Adger, please come to the podium. The floor is yours. Hold on, let me turn your mic on. There you are, sir.
Good afternoon, President Green, Superintendent Burden, Board members, and audience. My name is David Adger and I'm a senior at THE Booker T. Washington High School. I'm excited to be selected as the March Caddo Parish Student Leader of the Month. I'm currently the Booker T. Washington Student of the Year and have enjoyed my time representing Booker T. and telling others of the opportunities available at Booker T. Washington. I am proud to participate in band with the other band heads you will see in the room with me today as they prepare to perform later in the agenda. I've also enjoyed my time on the track team and serving as a student ambassador with the National Honor Society of High School Scholars. One opportunity that sets Booker T. Washington apart in what is able to provide students is the early college program. Prior to my senior year, I had the privilege to earn an associate's degree in general studies and I am currently pursuing my second associate's degree, this one in pre-engineering. That means I will not have one but two associate's degrees before I walk across the graduation stage this May to receive my high school diploma. I should add, this was all achieved at no cost to myself or the other students who participate. I'm incredibly proud of this achievement and believe more Caddo students should be given this opportunity. At the graduation, I plan to attend Jackson State University in Jackson, Mississippi, and major in biomedical engineering in hopes of becoming a neurosurgeon. This has been my lifelong passion since 7th grade when I read Gifted Hands by Ben Carson. After reading his story, I was inspired to use my hands as a gift to mankind. Again, thank you for this opportunity to represent Caddo Parish students and Booker T. Washington. Now, I will turn it over to District 3 Representative, Dr. Terrence Vincent, who will lead the audience in the invocation.
Please bow your heads. Well, thank you so much for another day. We thank you so much for the faculty and staff, the administrators, the teachers, the ground keepers, the bus drivers who help us see over the boys and girls of the Caddo Parish school system, Lord. Father God, we lift up, most importantly, the young men and women, high school, middle school, and elementary, who we are trying to pass policies to help their education. Lord, continue to bless them, to plead the blood of Jesus over them and their families. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Dr. Vincent. Representing District 3, please welcome to the stage Alexis Jones, Cameron Stewart, Haley Clark, Brooklyn Irvin, and Kaisley Miles, students from J.S. Clark Elementary, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you again to J.S. Clark Elementary. President Green, I will turn the floor back over to you for tonight's meeting. Thank you again for the opportunity to represent District 3 and Booker T. Washington High School.
Thank you so much, everybody. Please give Mr. David Adger a hand. And I see the Booker T. Washington family, a few people, y'all can stand up if you don't mind. I see the principal, Ms. Barnes, and thank y'all so much. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Burton. I apologize, we have roll call. If everyone has voted, please show the vote. Waiting on Mr. Umling. Waiting on Dr. Vincent. Please show the vote. Okay, nine are present. Now, do I have a motion for the minutes? Ms. Yates?
Moved to approve the minutes of the February 18, 2025, Caddo Parish School Board Meeting as recommended by staff and submitted in electronic mail-out.
Ms. Tramel?
Second.
It's been moving seconded, may I please have a vote? If the vote has been casted, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Burton. We're waiting on Dr. Vincent. All right, Mr. Burton?
Thank you, President Green. At this time, I'd like to ask Mary Nash Wood if she would come to the podium and introduce our special presentations for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Burton, President Green, board members, and this incredible audience. I should say, we have some seats in the front available, you have standing room only right now, as we get ready for our first performance. We're coining this a little bit of a music month for March. So you'll see before you this evening, some incredible students that exemplify so much creativity. You saw a little bit of David, you'll see him again in a little bit. So I wanna go ahead and turn it over to our musical performance. One of the major contributors in creating the legacy of Booker T. Washington High School, or I guess I should say after David, THE Booker T. Washington High School, over the years has been the band program. The elite ensemble of the Booker T. Washington Concert Band features the top musicians of the full band program. Over the past 11 years, the Booker T. Washington Concert Band has earned eight Superior Rating Plaques and a Sweepstakes Trophy from the LMEA District 8 Large Ensemble Assessment, two Superior Rating Plaques from Southern University Baton Rouge Concert Band Festival, and one Superior Rating Plaque from Alcorn State University Concert Band Festival. The Concert Band also won the first place trophy at the 2017 World Strides Heritage Festival in New York City, which features the top high school ensembles from across the country. The Concert Band also won the Gold and Educator Awards at the same festival. This year's Concert Band features four honor band students. This year's Concert Band just performed at three festivals in March, receiving superior and excellent ratings in all. They will be ending another successful performance here, right here, at Caddo Parish School Board's meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you, the Booker T. Washington High School Concert Band.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As they say in church, I bring you greetings from THE Booker T. Washington High School, 2104 Mountain Street. Our motto is Pursuing Excellence. Can we get a pre-round of applause for the Booker T. Washington? We're just gonna go through our three songs we played for the three festivals of March, song 42, and end with a nice uptempo, exciting tune. Is that all right with y'all? So we're gonna start off with a march entitled Lord, tomorrow. Before we do our next selection, trumpets and saxophone, stand up. These students have started playing their instruments. This is full section, a full trumpet section, full alto saxophone section. This is their first year ever in their life picking up these horns. Give them a hand. So they've only been playing these horns since August, when they first learned how to play trumpet, first learned how to play alto saxophone. But as you see and you hear, it sounds like they've been playing for a few years. And that's the type of teaching that we're doing in the class of here at Booker T. Washington. And the students are learning a lot, which takes them on into the college life, all right? So the next song is gonna feature Mrs. Jamaica House, who's gonna play the song 42. All right, we're gonna, our last piece for this evening is a piece entitled Scream. It features an Aztec death whistle. Blow it for me.
(screaming)
All right, so you were hearing that throughout the song, it's called Scream. So the Aztec death whistle sounds like an actual person screaming, all right? Like security was gonna go crazy, huh? Here we go. One, two, one, two, right, there.
Outstanding. Exactly right.
That's pretty much blew me out here.
That's what I'm saying.
Good job.
Pretty much blew me out here.
Good job.
Thank you, guys.
Good job, Mr. Hudson, thank you so much. Great job.
Ladies and gentlemen, I just wanna say, point of personal privilege, as the board is seeing these wonderful students exit and they'll come back around and shake your hands, but in the interim, I do wanna say, both for all of the support in getting us David here tonight, the opportunities provided, the incredible music performance, thank you, Crystal Barnes, just exceptional as our high school principal of the year. Just wanna give kudos. They're gonna come back through and shake your hands, we're gonna give them a minute to put their instruments down. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, are those cheerleaders still here?
I believe they already left. So yes, audience members, if you don't mind, one more round of applause for these students as they come through.
Congratulations. Way to go, good job, good job, y'all sound really good. Good job. Way to go, good job. Good job, y'all sound good. You sound really good, sir. Good job, sir. Way to go, good job. We're proud of you, good job. Good job, way to go. Good job. Way to go sweetheart, good job. 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 Way to go, good job. Good job, sir. Way to go. We're proud of you, good job. Good job. We're proud of you. We're proud of you, way to go. Good job. Good job. Way to go, we're proud of you, man. Good job, sir. Y'all keep up the good work. Good job, buddy. Good job, keep up the good work, way to go. Keep up the good work, man. Good job, buddy. Good job, man. Good job, way to go. Are you leaving us now? Are you gonna stay in there? I want you to be able to get that. Good job, proud of you.
Maestro? Excellent, good job. Thank you.
So Superintendent Burden, President Green, I'm also gonna ask for our dear Mr. Adger to join us as we prepare for our next presentation. Yes, you couldn't get away that easy, my friend. Sit for a second, or if you wanna come over here. Continuing on in our agenda, we're going to recognize someone you've already seen twice today, but I think it's worth it. So our Student Leader of the Month, we are honored to recognize David Adger. He's a distinguished senior at Booker T. Washington High School, you've heard that a few times tonight, right? His dedication to excellence in academics, athletics, and the arts showcases his exceptional leadership and commitment to personal growth. A standout student, David is excelling academically through the early college program, taking college-level courses while still in high school. With a passion for pre-engineering, he is also pursuing a second associate's degree, demonstrating his forward-thinking mindset and determination to build a strong foundation for his future. Beyond the classroom, David is a dedicated athlete on the track team. His hard work, perseverance, and leadership on the field inspire his teammates, proving that he is not only committed to his personal success, but also to the success of those around him. In addition to his academic and athletic accomplishments, you've also seen, he's a pretty talented musician and a valued member of the band. His dedication to the arts further highlights his versatility and his ability to thrive no matter the venue he's in. With aspirations for a future in biomedical engineering and going in to be a neurosurgeon, we know David is showcasing the best of what it means to be Caddo. So without further ado, I would like to welcome David Adger to the stage to recognize him as our student leader of the month. David is being pinned with the lapel pin that is used by board members as well as the superintendent to signify their dedication to Caddo schools and how well he represents this district. So at this time, I'm going to ask a longtime friend of Caddo schools, Shreveport Fire Department
Wow.
Whoa. We'll let him go around and shake hands before we move on to our next one. Chief Clarence Reese, to come join me on stage for his next presentation. Chief Reese comes today with a reminder that not all heroes wear capes, but they're heroes none the same. Karan Johnson, a fourth grader at Southern Hills Elementary, has quite a story as a testament to that belief. I'll turn it over to Chief Reese to tell us his story.
All right, I bring you greetings on behalf of the city of Shreveport, Mayor Tom Arsenault,
As Mr. Adger makes his way around, we want to expedite time.
and the many men and women of the Shreveport Fire Department, to President Jasmine Green,
I want him to know that education does pay off.
to Mr. Burden, Superintendent. Thank y'all for this opportunity.
So we have a small token for his work, for his dedication, to send him off to college.
And I just gotta say this while I'm at the mic, sweet babies, I can't get out of here
The principal and I got together for you, I want you to hear this, man, that education
without hearing it, Elise. Mr. Johnson, will you please come forward for me?
does pay off. Keep up the hard work. I already hear biomedical engineering.
The entire family, and also those with Shreveport Fire Department.
You headed to the top, and one day you're gonna be maybe working on my heart. So thank you. Come up and get your, come on, Madam Principal.
So many times we get to do this at the city council meeting, but how befitting to come to Caddo Parish School Board meeting. It's a little bit less stress for me anyway here. So, Shreveport Fire Department, this is a fire chief accommodation, certificate of accommodation to Mr. Karan Johnson. In recognition of your exceptional courage and swift action during the Shreveport Fire Department incident, F-2502978, on January 24, 2025, at approximately 5:58 a.m., when a fire broke out at your residence located in the 8700 block of Elbert Circle, you demonstrated remarkable presence of mind in alerting your family of immediate danger. Through your quick thinking and decisive action, you ensured the safety and well-being of your loved ones, enabling, enabling them to evacuate the home without harm. Shreveport Fire Department crews arrived on scene within three minutes of dispatch and found smoke and flames visible from the front of a single-story residence. The firefighters immediately entered the structure to combat the flames, and thanks to your efforts, the family of six was able to escape the perilous situation unscathed. Your heroic act in the face of danger is a testament of your strength, resolve, and love for your family. It is because of your courage that lives were saved, and this accommodation is a reflection of the outstanding bravery exhibited during this critical incident. The Shreveport Fire Department and the entire community extend their deepest gratitude for your selflessness and courageousness, courageous response. Your actions will serve as an inspiration to others and a reminder of the power of thinking in times of crisis. Given under my hand of the city of Shreveport, this 18th day of March 25th, Clarence J. Reese, Jr., Shreveport Fire Chief, I present to you a challenge coin and a patch that we so proudly wear on our shoulder.
Ready to go, fella. Hey, Chief Lady, you can hold his cap. All right. All eyes right here. All right, all eyes right here. Ready, one, two. Way to go, champ.
Let's give them another round of applause. So I told you we had some pretty good ones. It's hard to top it already, right? I got a little something else, though, for you. So who wants to hear about some all-state band, choir, and orchestra? Anybody in this room? The Louisiana All-State instrumentalists and vocalists being recognized tonight have auditioned against other students from throughout the entire state in a highly competitive and rigorous competition process, that's over again, which requires extensive preparation and practice. Making an all-state ensemble is an esteemed honor, which only a few students earn, making them the best of the best coming before you tonight, ladies and gentlemen. These students performed alongside other Louisiana students in January in New Orleans as part of the 2025 LMEA Professional Development Conference, as well as all-state concerts. We're gonna start with the middle school students, and then we'll move on to high school. So let's kick it off with Caddo middle magnet, and none other than James Robertson. James in the audience tonight? Okay, we'll keep going. Rose Baker. Next will be Riley Gage. Wearing such nice shirts, guys. Trinity Johnson here with us. Continuing with Eden Moore. I'm also gonna embarrass this one, because every one of her students is the ones on this list. Robin de Buss, come up here. I present to you your middle school all-state students. Let's do one round of applause. Now for a photo we promised to share with you, parents, I promise.
Orchestra is Zach Grant. Band, band is Amy Coots. K-U-T-Z. And then choir is Rebecca Bryan. I don't see the other, Zach is here, though.
Okay. Okay. So we also want to take a moment to recognize the teachers who made this possible. That would be Zach Grant with orchestra, Amy Coots with band, and Rebecca Bryan with choir. Come on.
Give us a moment just to pivot.
Okay. So let's take on some high school. So kicking it off with Caddo Magnet High School, we'll start with Noel Strange. You're fine. Those Joseph jeans are strong, aren't they? Come on, Max. Nat Barker. Continuing on to Captain Shreve High School, we have Cal Corl, representing Captain Shreve. Come on, Cal. We see those music genes running the family. We'll go back to Magnet High, where we will see Zoe Alexander. Caroline Duffy. Ashlyn Rice. Gabriel McLemon. We're gonna bring some energy for this last two. C.E. Bird, come on. So C.E. Bird representing, we have Aaron Bro. And a familiar face we've seen, Max Pinkney. Welcome back, Matt. I present to you our all-state students for high school. As they're setting up the photo, we also want to take a moment to celebrate the teachers and staff who made this possible. That includes Dr. Thomas Stone, Zachary Grant, Jennifer Jackson, Joby Miller, and Rebecca Bryan. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much, have a great night. So Mr. Burton, with that, we conclude tonight's presentations.
Thank y'all for presentations. We are now down to the visitor's section. I'm gonna make sure that everybody has a card turned in, let's see, okay. The Caddo Parish School Board welcomes your input and comments during visitor's section. When your name is called, please step to the microphone, give your name and address, and make your remarks to the entire board. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. The clocks on the monitor screens will help you be aware of your time. When the time runs out, your time is up. It is the board's policy not to respond individually to board members of the audience. When appropriate, the board member, the board may refer concerns to the staff to be addressed. As this is a public meeting, we ask that you refrain from referring to personnel by name or incident. In accordance with school board policy, derogatory statements about or directed at school board members, any employee, or any other person shall not be allowed. Thank you. Okay, Ms. John Glover.
President Green, you do see that I have two of those.
I see you have two, yes ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board, President Green. My name is John Glover, 9100 Walker Road, Apartment 217, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71118. Today I rise with a few questions. Questions I know I won't get a response to, but I really want those on the record. I want to know when is it going to be the first... Oh, I apologize. When is it there going to be the first work session for the upcoming budget? Then I want to know with regards to the propositions that you all are supporting. I voted today. And the questions were there, and I voted accordingly. Back in 2019, there were 37,868 students in Caddo Parish. That number has diminished considerably. Now it's 32,614 students in Caddo Parish. Now, my question is, why didn't those millages represent the number of students that we have in Caddo Parish? See, why should we give you more money for less students? Would not the diminishing of those student population not dictate maybe not as many teachers? Since the staff, since the students are not there, what are you gonna use to support the dollars? The AMFP dollars, how many of those dollars are there that the school system collect off of these 32,614 students? And we know there are other funding sources that come into the Caddo Parish School Board. Now, we recognize too, reading the legislation, that none of this will take effect until 2027. So, you know, me, trying to figure out why the rush, because there seems to have been no true consideration to this population decline, the student population decline. So it would definitely make me wonder what's really going on. You know, I want us to be good stewards of our dollars, indeed. You say we don't need to give away any money, we need more money. Well, we need more money, but what are we asking for money to do? And what are you gonna propose to do with those more dollars? Because right now, as those millages stand, you're gonna be getting what you've always gotten, but you're gonna have a decline in student population. So where would those dollars be allocated? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. And if you don't mind, right before 8.03, just can you put your hand up to tell me? Yeah, okay. Ms. Jackie Lansdale?
It's getting to be a regular one-two, isn't it? I'm Jackie Lansdale, President of Red River United, 1726 Line Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana. I just passed out an invitation, or the process of passing out an invitation to our 19th Most Improved Student Celebration. I was looking through that because I had to verify that timeline on that, that we missed one time, and that was during the COVID year, that we've had this celebration every time. Think about the number of students that come across the dais that we've been able to celebrate that have turned their lives around. This is what I wanted to do is tonight, to purposely and expressly and intentionally invite you to that. We want to invite you to celebrate an extraordinary group of students. Those have shown remarkable growth in attendance, behavior, and academics. These are young people in your schools and your districts who have faced challenges and with perseverance and support, turned their lives around. Your presence at this event is not only symbolic, it sends a powerful message to these students and their families, that their hard work matters, that they are seen, they are valued, and supported by the very leaders shaping their educational future. Here's why your attendance is vital. Encouragement and validation. For many of these students, this celebration marks a turning point. Seeing their district leaders recognize their progress can be the motivation they need to keep striving. Community engagement. Your presence reinforces the connection between the school board and the students you serve, demonstrating that leadership extends beyond policy. It includes personal investment in student success. Equity and recognition. We often celebrate higher achievers, but students who overcome obstacles to improve also deserve that spotlight. This event highlights the school system's commitment to every student's success. Inspiration for others. Younger students, teachers, and families take note of these moments. When they see leadership engaged, it reinforces the culture of support, perseverance, and achievement. It is a reflection of your leadership. The policies you shape influence these students' lives. Attending also allows you to witness the real life impact of those decisions, and connects with the stories behind the stats. These students have worked hard to earn this moment. Let's show them that their district leaders stand with them, not just in making policies, but in celebrating their success. We hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lansdale, and I received one name. Ms...
May I speak to this just for one second? Mr. Personal Purpose?
Mr. Rochelle.
Thank you. If you have not attended this ceremony, I can tell you that it will fill you full of joy, pride. Two of them I cried at, and it is, it is an amazing thing. How many years has this now been going on?
Nineteen, we missed one for COVID.
Nineteen years, and I have to tell you, it is, I hate to put one above any of the rest of them, but to me, this is probably right up at the very top of our children's recognition, and I highly encourage y'all to go if you haven't been. Singing the tune.
Now, hold on, I'm letting, hey, look, this was supposed to be going on during board members' announcements and requests, but I let, I let Mr. Rochelle go. And it is a wonderful program, Ms. Lansdale, thank you for honoring our kids. Yes, ma'am, yeah. I'm letting, I'm letting him have a senior moment. Ms. Crystal Ellison?
Good evening. My name is Crystal Ellison. My address is 7204 Legion Circle, Shreveport, Louisiana. And I'm here as part of an organization, My Matters Foundation Incorporated here. Okay? I'm simply here to just request for you guys' support. I kinda wanted to introduce, formally introduce us. We are a mental health and educational nonprofit organization here. Over the past year here, we're fairly new, we have adopted two schools, which was Jess Clark Elementary and Turner Elementary. We begin work with our back-to-school drive, and we also, throughout the year, we have been doing different mental health workshops at the schools, as well as we did a semi-annual re-up on backpacks and things like that. We just announced that we will be, right now, we're doing a trial period with a financial literacy program at Huntington High School. So again, we are mental health awareness of and education. We have a mental health awareness event coming up in May, and we just asking for you guys' support and maybe have your schools in encouragement for the community, as well to come out to this event here. Our simple purpose for this event here is just to improve academics, mindfulness, and just be a more of a community-based, bringing awareness, de-stigmatizing the topic as in general. With this May event, we do know it's going to be at the end of the year, so we just want to encourage, because it will be vendors there as well for, with Red River Bank, as well as mental health agencies as well. So we do know during the summertime that behavior activity and things like that, so parents would know that they have those resources available to them, as well as maybe the seniors and things like that, they can maybe sign up for banking institutions and stuff like that. So that last little bit of resources, tools and resources, they'll have available at the event as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ellison. Yes, sir, Dr. Vincent?
Yes, very briefly, just wanna echo the sentiments that Ms. Ellison, the comments she made. Wanna definitely get you connected to Board Member Bell, because this event will be housed occurring in your district. I think it's gonna be an obstacle course, and it's gonna be in between the field of Huntington and Turner. And I attended the event at Turner, and it is a great work there. So wanna definitely thank you on behalf of the entire board and the families and citizens you're serving, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Vincent. Okay. Moving right along with our agenda, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Burton so that he can go over our agenda, thank you.
Thank you, President Green. Members of the board, for the agenda for tonight, Tuesday, May 18th, you'll find 6.01, there are no personnel recommendations. 6.02, personnel leaves, that is on consent. 6.03, personnel resignations, that is also on consent. 6.04, administrative contract renewals, there are two there, those are also on consent. 7.01, capital project bids, there are six bids, and of course, there's backup there. It is important to note that on all six of those bids that they came in, under budget. 7.02, purchasing bids, there are none. 8.01, we have no property or bus rental request. 8.02, consideration to approve revision to policy GAK Personnel Records, that is on consent. 8.03, consideration to approve ITIP Property Tax Exemption for Lubrication Technologies Incorporated. 8.04, consideration to approve the Third Amendment to the Buy and Sell Agreement Resolution and Extract Resolution Regarding Barrett Padilla Academy. 8.05, consideration to approve resolution to, for of continued employment. 9.01 will be superintendent's report, and skipping down to 13.01, we do have one student readmission appeals hearing, but parents are in agreement with staff.
Thank you. I'm gonna go back through if there's any one that you might wanna add on consent. I'll start with, there's none on 6.01. 6.02 is on consent, 6.03 is on consent, 6.04 is on consent, 7.01, consent. 7.02, there is none. Oh, okay. 8.01, there is none, 8.02 is on consent, 8.03, I think I'm gonna leave that one off. 8.04... Okay, do you have questions? Well, they don't, they have a question, so it's off consent. Okay, 8.05, consent. Okay, and that is, that only leaves us with 8.03, not on consent, and that leaves us with 8.04, not on consent. Okay, no problem, we can pull it off of consent. Okay, so we have 8.03, 8.04, and 8.05, not on consent, and 13.01, all the parents are in agreement and is on consent. So... I will entertain a motion, Ms. Yates.
Moved to confirm, no, sorry. Moved to establish the agenda and the proposed consent agenda for the March 18th, 2025 Caddo Parish School Board meeting.
Ms. McLean?
Second.
That motion has been moved and seconded. Please vote. So we're down to confirm? No, wait. Oh, okay. We're on the agenda for 8.03. Ms., was that the one, 8.03? You can go ahead and come up. Wait, you have to have them up, but while you're coming up, we're going to put a motion on the floor. Mr. Abrams, it always goes, does she speak before the motion?
Yes.
Okay, good deal. Making sure that I'm in order.
Did we confirm?
You said, were you on 8.03 or 8.04?
Three.
Okay. So she speaks now, right?
We got to confirm.
I'm asking if we confirm the agenda.
We established, okay, so let's confirm the agenda. Okay, and that's what I, that's what I thought you were on for. Okay. So Ms. Bell, move to confirm.
Okay, I was going to make that, okay, I move to confirm the agenda, the consent agenda.
Okay. Mr. Rochelle?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Ms. Bell and seconded by Mr. Rochelle. When I asked that, everybody was looking around. Okay, so now we've got that, we're down to 8.03. So now it's, now it's your turn, Ms. Glover.
John Glover, 9100 Walker Road, Apartment 217, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71118. Not more than a few minutes ago, reminding us that we're asking for us to give you more money, yet we're going to give away, what is it, $38,000 per year for the next five years, and though it may diminish in, in its numbers, that is what you're asking on this lubrication technologies incorporated. I do and recall Mr. Hart, I believe he was the plant manager who stood before you all and said that he has had a $4.3 million equipment investment, they have retained 121 jobs, and that his capacity is doing well. So I'm trying to figure out why would we give them this incentive, because it seems like an incentive to me. $38,000 may not be much, but it is much, especially now that we're having voters to vote on renewing dollars for the public school system. So I want you all to consider that when you're doing what you do, because if you're going to give away money, then don't ask us to give you money. It's just simple math. Thank you.
Ms. Lansdale, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I have it on my card.
I didn't see it. I apologize.
I didn't give you two cards.
Okay. You can go speak now.
Thank you so much.
Jackie Lansdale, 1726 Line Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana. Speaking of the same item, but what I want to bring to your attention is, there is, while we're giving away funds, and, and you've made that decision, it's very obvious that you wanted to do that, that there needs to be some appreciable way to measure that. And I would just encourage the board to come back with a policy that speaks to that, how this, this, giving away this public funding, how that's going to be beneficial to our school system, and whether it be through an internship program, a STEM program, a community program, whatever it might be, that there might be a way to measure how, and I think you could do that through a policy form, through the policy committee, and that we, you, we would all have some measure of comfort that the monies that are given away that are actually being returned to the boys and girls in our district. And I just think there'd be, and that would way to do that. And before I forget, Ms. Bell's going to be there doing our kindness awards for us this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there a motion, if anybody else would like to speak to, okay. All righty, I'll entertain a motion at this time for 8.03. Ms. Bell?
Yeah. I move to approve the ITIP property tax exempt from lubrication technology as submitted in the electronic mail-out.
Mr. Rochelle?
Second.
Ms. Bell, you have something you would like to say?
Yes, I will. Mm-hmm. And I agree with what Ms. Lansdale said. I think the last time we did, it was in my district, I can't think of the places, right up there in my district, and we asked for the same thing, and they are interning, and they're using a lot of the students and, I think now, it's just like the young man, just getting two associate degrees. That means he had to go somewhere to, to learn about those different things. We can do that, and I like the idea that if we're going to do it, that we can do that. Have them to make sure, that's where we have the career center. That's where we can get ready to do Jess Clark and Broadmoor, and that's other, like at Huntington, and I didn't defy Academy deal, okay? So I'm saying, yes, by all means, $35,000 is still money, but it's good, because we can use it to help our students in a career, and they can do interns. So I think we need to do that anytime they come up, because I do believe they're going to be fair to our babies. I do think that, and we can do that, and with a policy, we'll look at it through the attorney, and maybe we would do, or look at a policy by doing that, whenever we do that, make sure they do give back. And they can give back by doing interns and stuff like that. Plus, a lot of, it's just like the library board, they getting ready to hire students to work during the summer. So yes, we can do it. I think it's great.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Mr. Rochelle, do you have something?
Yes, I do.
That you made a second?
The, and I will say, this is an incentive for them to stay here. If, if it helps them stay here, the average, just using the numbers that they have in this, so it's just going to be an average, that's 121 jobs at about $43,000 a year. I wish, and Jeff, I don't know how quickly you can do this in your head, or if you can even estimate, that with $5 million worth of payroll, how many times does it roll down and turn over in the economy and generate sales taxes? Do you know, just estimated?
Okay. Well, and I've read this, and I don't remember what the exact numbers is, but those funds turn over, and I want to say it's about four or five times over, so, because it's being spent locally, and then there's more people that are paid, and then it just, and it just keeps rolling down. So the $38,000 that's, that's going to them, and I, I don't know, Jeff, and maybe we can do this one time, I'd like to, there's got to be some statistic, ChatGPT will know the answer. The, so, is that we kept 121 jobs here, that through sales taxes alone, I, I don't even know what the multiplier is going to be, but I'm sure it's going to be substantially more. There have been some that I have not been so in favor of, but it happened to be a year I paid a tremendous amount of property taxes, and I don't ever get a break. They, they had, they caught me at a very bad, I think they were doing, they showed up in December when I was paying them. That's what it was. They, but anyway, I do believe that this is a great incentive to, for, to keep companies here. They, I mean, we've, I mean, we've lost GM, we've lost GE, we lost that others, and they just disappear. And when they disappear, we lose students. And so there's, there's a lot of loss there. But anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Armman?
Thank you, Madam President. I cannot, I have to recognize what Ms. Lansdale said and Ms. Glover said. What is the benefit we're getting from this? We are, we are overseeing education, not economic development. I kind of like, you know, I'm, I'm both sides of the fence, sort of, but with that said, I think we need to have, before I could sign off, I think we need something that gives us something back. This company will still be able to get tax breaks from Caddo Parish and the state. We don't really have to give up ours, but I, I'm just not seeing anything in return for this, this money that's not ours, and we're going to give it away. And here we are, asking the voters of Caddo Parish to give us money on the 29th. So with that said, I, I just think we need to look at this a little bit deeper and see if this is really and truly something that we should be getting into on an economic development standpoint. Thank you, Ms., Madam President.
All righty. Thank you. Mr. Armman? I, I have a quick question, maybe Mr. Burton can help. Is this company helping us with anything, or do we have any interns with these people? Do we have, what, what, can you line out some kind of, something, a partnership that we're doing with them at all?
President Green, if you remember during our executive committee meeting, I, I mentioned to the gentleman that was here that I would love to, to put him in, in touch with Ms. Bogosian and staff. He did reach out to me, and I've connected them, and they are actually meeting to talk about what internships or other partnerships will be available in the future.
Okay. So nothing, just concrete as of right now? It's just, right, okay. Okay. Just, I just want, you know, a little bit of transparency here, so we can all, everybody can get on the same page. But, but we do look to do something with them in the future?
Yes.
Okay.
And they were very willing to partner with us.
Okay, good deal. Ms. Bell?
Okay, I'd just like to say this, in defense of what I said. To me, we do teach economics, we do teach business, we got courses, we teach education. And look like I misunderstood, Mr., he said we don't teach that? That's what we all about. We're all about putting students out there where they will have careers and things, and how best you going to learn a career unless you offered in the classroom and have these companies come in with the money to say, look, we can do this, we can advance this, but we can teach this child. So I thought, sure, maybe I took it wrong, but I thought this is what we all about, to make sure that we meet every student as a whole, make sure they see what they need to be done. So to me, if competent, and I agree with Barry, we don't need to run anybody away. I guarantee you, 121, how many people they had, 121? I guarantee you, they have families, they have children that's going to the public schools, I'm sure we doing that. So I, I don't think we need to ever turn, not wait things are being closed down now, buildings, I mean, business, we need as much as we can. But then when you got a company here that's going to come and bring people, then they bringing children to our, to the public schools, we need to look at it, instead of throwing, say, about $35,000. I mean, that bothers me. I thought we was here to educate the child as a whole, regardless of what. So I'm thinking, and the reason I'm, I'm fighting this, I'm saying, I'm going to do this, is to vote for it, please, because we, I'm looking out for, maybe my grandchild may get a job there eventually, since he's in high school and taking courses, dual enrollment. So I got to look out for the, for the future. Okay? And I'm finished.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bell. Dr. Vincent?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to put a motion on the table to postpone until we can get some, you know, do the tour, and maybe get a formal agreement in, because that's what I was thinking, that we would, we would tour, and I'm, I'm saying I'm not against it, but I think the board would be sued if maybe we could view it, do the tour, and, and put a, put an agreement forward.
Mr. Howard has some comments?
If it is postponed until next month, then it will automatically be passed at the state level, so we, we have a certain number of days to put it on an agenda, and then a certain number of days to pass it. Either, either say yes or no, so it will, if it does, if it's not, you know, voted on tonight, it will just automatically be approved.
What, Mr. Howard, yeah, that, actually, if I was smart, that would have been my first question, that was in the back of my mind. So if we miss this one, it's over with, pretty much.
Yes, sir.
Man.
And this is actually going to be, just for, for the board's information, this is going to probably be the last one that is brought to the board. The rules are changing as of May, and they've been talking about changing for a while, but they've finally gotten it all together, and they'll be changing, and they will no longer be coming to the board.
It'll go to the state?
Yeah, to the state. The state will make the decision.
Thank you. Thank you. I would, I would draw.
Okay. Say that, you said it'll go straight to the state, Mr.?
Yes, ma'am. Right now, right now, it goes through the state and then down to, to your local boards or councils, and, but it, it won't, it will no longer do that under the new rules.
I got you. Thank you, Mr. Howard. We appreciate that information. All right, Dr. Vincent, you're done? Okay, I have Mr. Rochelle on.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. Number one, thank you all for going and getting with them and being proactive. I appreciate the assurance. I did, ChatGPT is, can be good, is, and I'm going to use what they say, the average rate of turnover or multiplier is. They say it can be anywhere from two to seven times that it actually multiplies over, and there's other things, all kinds of stuff in there, so I'll just use an average, which would, would it be equivalent to about $18.2 million that circulated through the economy in an annual period, which equates for our sales tax of point zero, or 1.5%, which comes out to about $273,000. So I think it is, it's a, you know, a $38,000 incentive with a 273 windfall. And, you know, in my books, if I could invest $38,000 in something every year and get $273,000 back in return, I would have retired years ago. The, that's a, that's, oh my gosh, what is that? That's like an 800% return on my money. So I think it's a good thing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rochelle. Now we see where you get all your answers from. Yeah. Now we see where you've been, who's been doing your homework. And also, I would like to say before we take the vote, I was not going to vote for this, but now since there has been an agreement forth, and Mr. Burton, I'm looking forward to you holding their feet to the fire to do what they're saying they're going to do with some kind of partnership with the Caddo Parish School Board, I'll go ahead and vote for it now. So we can take a vote, since there's, are you, you're on, Ms. Yates? Okay, there's nobody? Are you on back on?
Mr. Howard, is that math mathin' about the turnover and all that? Is that ChatGPT mathin'? Is that?
Oh, is it mathin'?
Yeah, is that math mathin'?
I think it's in all that.
I'm telling you, man, I'm, but anyway, I'm, I'm just kidding. I know a lot of times we do ask how much sale tax goes back into the pool, and it's never more, it's always less, but anyway, I appreciate you. Thank you, sir.
Okay. There's no one on the floor, so we are, Ms. Yates? So we're ready to take a vote, since there's no one else on the board to speak. When everyone has cast their vote, please show the vote. Okay, we're now down to 8.04. Do I have a motion on the floor? Mr. Rochelle? Mr. Rochelle?
Move to approve the Third Amendment to the Buy and Sell Agreement Resolution, an extract resolution regarding Barrett Padilla Academy as recommended by staff and submitted in the electronic mail out.
Ms. Bell?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Rochelle, do you have any comments?
No, no, ma'am.
No comments from Mr. Rochelle? Ms. Bell, do you have any comments?
No, just thank you, we selling some buildings.
Okay, all righty. Ms. Yates?
I just have one, or maybe two. This is the second extension, correct? That we've given them?
This is the third.
Is it just they're trying to get their finance stuff in order? Is it, it's not issue on our end, correct?
No, they've just asked for a non-refundable $5,000 extension.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no more questions, please vote. As soon as everyone casts their vote, please? Okay, well, I just cast mine. Okay. Well, as soon as we get everything together, show the vote, cast your vote, and please show the vote. That passes with nine. We're now down to 8.05. Do I have a motion on the floor? Ms. Yates?
Move to approve Resolution of Continued Employment as Recommended by Staff and Submitted in the Electronic Mail Out.
Mr. Rochelle?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Yates, do you have anything that you would like to say?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Rochelle, do you have anything that you would like to say?
I think it's always good to get an explanation of what this is and how it actually functions on an annual basis. That may, whoever wants to do it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Mayo?
Whoever wants to answer that?
Oh, hey, hey, hey.
We do this every year, so.
Okay. Mr. Abrams, can you hit your, there you go. Mr. Abrams?
Yes, normally if there's a break in service, because school gets out, and we have summer months off, we basically have a break in service, people could go and get unemployment. And they allow you to have a resolution that you intend to have continuous employment. So therefore, you have to have this resolution on file in order to say that these people will be coming back to work and there are not going to be actually a break in service, they're actually going to continue to get paid. So you need the resolution order to make certain that they don't go and get unemployment on the meantime.
Okay, that was it, I just wanted to make sure that the, just to clarify all that. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayo?
Oh, just go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, there's no one else on the board to speak, so right now we can vote. Ms. Darla, if you're ready. Okay. Please cast your vote. As soon as the votes are cast, Ms. Feible, please show the vote. It passes with nine. We're down to superintendent's report. Mr. Burton?
Thank you, President Green. Board members, I'd love to bring your attention to flyers that are at your station. The one I think is most important, it's the one that says Board Member Training Session on Tuesday, April 1st. It's going to be a pretty busy day. We do have a building and grounds and security meeting that afternoon at 1:00. And we are taking advantage of, since we are starting that early that afternoon, we thought it was only opportunistic to be able to provide some training. And so we are providing, as you see, from 8:30 to 10:30, computer-based training in this room. And so you can come here and get some of the mandated trainings such as ethics, sexual harassment, sped, bullying, hazing, all of that training done. And then we will have informational trainings for you in small groups rotating through. Two, the LSBA has approved this for three hours of professional development. And so we would encourage you to please attend if possible. And if you would, just let us know, since we are providing lunch, if you're able to attend. And the second is the Caddo Parish, not Caddo Parish School Board, but the Parish of Caddo's Day at the Capitol is going to be April the 24th from 8:00 to 12:30. They're asking us to poll your interest in participating. There is a $30 registration fee. And if you will let us know at the bottom whether you are interested in attending, of course, we'll make sure that we take care of all the registration for you. Thank you.
Okay. I noticed. Okay, I noticed he sent, he put this on April 1st, so this might be an April fool's joke on us guys.
I promise the catfish won't be.
Yeah, April, but I'm teasing. Mr. Rochelle?
Thank you, Madam President. Are we going to have a retreat this year with things qualified for our continuing hours?
This will count toward your continuing hours.
No, I understand. Are we going to have a retreat where we get, that it also qualifies for continuing hours?
For the '24-'25 school year? We've already had one.
Okay, and how many?
We had the one that we had in the fall.
Okay, and how many hours, if any, were, did we get for that? Okay, so again, I'll ask, do we plan or intend to have another retreat this year?
Not in the '24-'25 school year. But we have none planned for the fall as of now, so I can't, I can't give you a definite answer for the '25-'26.
Do we know when we'll have an answer on the retreat that we had and how that normally goes?
Or we might have to have one?
Oh. So we're not, when did we, when did we have the retreat?
In November.
In November, so we're not going to have a retreat for 2025?
This will be the spring retreat, and there, as of now, there are no.
And there's only three hours, we're only going to get three?
Continuing certification. And you get the pleasure of attending a Building and Grounds Committee meeting at 1:00 and a board meeting at 4:30.
Okay.
Okay. Are you through, Mr. Rochelle?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Dozart?
I'm sorry, I spoke out.
Okay.
Forgive me.
Mr. Omlin?
Thank you, Madam President. It's days like today that remind me what Madam President wants to do with funds in increased band and instruments and music and all of those sorts of things. And I'd like to bring up one other thing. Recently in the news, there's been a lot of talk about these red light cameras and the legality of those. And I believe we're getting, I thought, $60,000, basically a year. I'm not sure how correct I am on that figure. But I would sure like for that money to be dedicated towards some sort of activity with the schools.
Yeah, that, those funds are, they are dedicated to early childhood education.
Oh, I see.
Yes. And those are the, those are coming from, of course, Blue Line Solutions through, via the city, and that is for school zone cameras only. There's been no conversation at all with the city or the parish regarding their future plans for the other speed cameras.
I just, I just brought that up because I didn't like the idea of getting that money. It was like extorting the taxpayer, kind of, for lack of words. But anyway, I do, I enjoyed tonight, I liked that. I think we do need to go more into those programs. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Omlin. Dr. Vincent?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am, Madam President. I was thinking about Superintendent Mr. Burton. At some point, can we get a briefing on the possible cut from the feds that could potentially happen? And some repercussions of that? In addition to it may be late in regards to the constitutional amendments to, you know, because I know teacher pay raises were all wrapped up into that and maybe how that could or potentially affect us this year and moving down the road, because I think it could be some unfunded mandate stuff in there. At least that's what we all hearing.
We can get that information to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Vincent. Ms. Bell?
Before I do my main, it's announcements, right? Okay, now I want to ask a question. Can we, can we say something about our propositions? Can we say something about that?
On your personal time, I'm sure.
Oh, no, but not during the school board, we can't do it now. Uh-uh, I'm saying that now, we can't say while we have school board meeting.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Oh, okay, 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 I just want to know because somebody did say something. Okay, huh?
I think all we can do is to say, go vote.
Go vote, babe, please go vote for the retirees. I'm through with that, okay. I thought I could speak because it all, I can speak. Okay, I'm not going, okay. Okay, I'll speak, okay, so I can speak for Dottie Bell. Okay, I got two things.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Red, I can't speak, sweet baby. Okay, that's all right, I did enough to, okay, that's all right. But I'm going to do my, now you know I wasn't going to leave here unless I say something about the best basketball team in the state. And that's why I'm not Huntington. And I'm getting ready to meet with the group, get ready, get your date set for the day before Easter. We going to do something on Raspberry Lane. And I'm inviting all of you, we finna tear up the city because we got history making. The best basketball team in the state. And I want y'all to make sure, put that on your calendar.
And Ms. Bell, that's the Thursday before Easter.
Thursday before Easter.
Thursday before Easter.
And the boy going to take care of something too. But anyway, I want y'all to be there, please, don't, no excuses.
Did you get a float for us, Ms. Bell?
Huh?
Did you get a float?
Don't worry about what we finna do, you just be there. Because I got some special guests coming in, so you just be there.
Yeah, hey.
Raspberry Lane, and I'm taking care of all of the babies. We got 1,400 students there, and we going to do it.
I'm talking now.
Okay, yes, ma'am. But anyway, y'all be there. And Ms. Newspaper Lady, put it up in there, the advocate, I want it on there. Okay, we got the best team in the nation, okay? Why not, what's the word? Why not Huntington?
Hold on, whoa, whoa, whoa.
I'll talk to you later.
Uh, Mr. Mayo?
No, 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 I.
Hold on, Mr. Mayo, hold on one second. Dr. Vincent, were you back on? No, I'm letting Mr. Mayo go, you can go after Mr. Mayo.
All right, Mr. Turn.
Hold on, so, hold on a second. Hey, look, hit the thing again, Mr. Mayo. All right. You can go.
I'm trying to make sure I do this correctly, without asking a question as it refers to the propositions, amendments, and all the stuff that's going on politically out there in the world, okay? All right. Oh, we, I wouldn't tell nobody how to vote. Okay, well, I'm not trying to tell nobody how to vote. I just want to make sure that since many moons ago, I worked in communications, and one of the things that we had to make sure that people understood, we can't rewrite those proposals. Once they are written, I don't care how many year old they are, they are written the same each time they come up. So we have to understand that when we see them, it may look like we are doing something, but we're not doing it. It's written that way, and they have so many years, 10 years, I think every 10 years, they're going to come up to match whatever we think they should match. And I just hate that we can't do that, but it's not to the board to do. Now, if you think it's, if anyone should think it's a way of frauding or fixing or making something work, it's not. It's just the way that they are written. If we had 10 students or we had 34,000 students, 32,000, 36,60, it was written the same amount and it changed each, never changed. So I don't know, I'm not quite understanding, hopefully that that's not an issue or a problem with the people that will be hearing this, since we cannot say go vote yea and nay. It's your privilege to vote the way that you want. But I just want to make sure you know, we can't rewrite it because it would have been rewritten years ago. Because we started losing population, so we can't change that. So I just, it was something that just touched me in a way. And if anybody got a question, they can come to me because I can answer. Okay, that's, that's.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayo. Dr. Vincent?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry about that, I was speaking more so on the superintendent's report, so I apologize for having to get back on. But I want to, and this is a question, everybody, you know it's a man's world, right?
No.
But it wouldn't be nothing without a woman. I am wearing my pink today, and I just wanted to say, I saw your, the beautiful board members who attended the city council meeting, and that's the purpose of my pink today and to celebrate, not celebrate, but commemorate Breast Cancer Month and all that stuff. But just wanted to say happy Women's Appreciation Month this month to all the mothers, non-mothers, and to women throughout the city, parish, state, and world, so.
All right, you actually took my, you actually took exactly what I was going to say because I was going to have all the women in the room stand up.
Just wanted to say thank you for all you do, those on the board and throughout, so thank you so much, thank you.
All righty, thank you. That's exactly what I was fixing to get on. We did have a celebration at the city council meeting, and it was so great to see women from all different backgrounds being able to attend. And just want to say happy Women's Month to every woman in this room that does something in education or is spotlighting, the city of Shreveport is spotlighting, the Love Shreveport Bozier is spotlighting our very own, Ms. Angela Henry this month. As a leading lady in Caddo, so we're happy to have her representing us for Caddo Parish. And also, Ms. Bell, what, when is the parade, when is, what we having for Huntington? Okay, so I thought that was something coming up. Also, you guys, I want us to look at, since graduation is happening, coming very, very rapidly, I want us to look at having one board meeting in May, if you guys don't mind. Because I know May is a hectic month for everybody trying to rip and run the graduations. So if you don't mind, I want us to look at having one board meeting in May. I'd like to have one in June, but let's stick to one in May. Yeah, so one in May, and we already have one in July, so one in May would work for me. We'll get with Ms. Darla to send out communications on that one day in May. Mr. Mayo?
No, no.
Okay, Ms. Yates?
Move to adjourn the March 18th, 2025 Caddo Parish School Board Meeting.
Mr. Mayo?
Move, yeah, second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded, please vote to adjourn.